This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilman Williams is absent today. Councilman Avery?
Here.
Engels?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I will ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to come together to do what you wish us to do. We thank you for all that you've done for us and we ask that you will be with us here as we go through the process of trying to determine what's best for your city. Be with us, lead us, guide us, and direct us, and we will forever give you all the praise. These blessings we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
War ego.
Yay Slippery Rock.
Chairman, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting on June 21st.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chairman, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the weeks of June 17th through the 23rd and 24th through the 30th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
I didn't get a chance to discuss, but I'll discuss it in a reminder. I was going to discuss something about that, but...
You want to discuss it for our business?
Yeah, periodically, well, not periodically, every week I go over the accounts payable. I've been noticing some accounts that we've paid out like about $8,000 to a local store, vendor, and then on further investigation, I found out we spent about $65,000 with them from year to date. I think we need to let our purchasing department take a second look at how we're doing those local purchases like that. I think there's a state bid law, particularly when you start buying recidivism as far as certain items, and maybe we need to start looking at bidding those items out as opposed to just go in and purchase them. Am I correct, Roger? I think if we buy something, it's the same item, a little bit at a time, and it goes over the state bid list, then we should bid it. Is that correct? Okay. I just want our department heads to probably take a closer look at what they're purchasing on a week-to-week basis or a month-to-month basis and find out exactly how much they're spending over a period of a physical year, and we might want to look at bidding those items as opposed to just going and purchasing them.
Proclamation, I don't see anybody from the mayor's office here, so I assume we don't have any today.
Shane's here.
Oh.
Where is Shane?
He's back in the back.
You're supposed to sit up here in the front now.
(laughing).
I can't see you way back there.
Right over here.
Okay.
We have none? New business? Is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have one resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning, and it's a Resolution 256. It's a resolution altering the easement to... It's dark in here, I can't see. It's granting easement to Alabama Power Company to... in order to extend the service to the proposed traffic signal at the intersection of Black Creek Parkway and Will's Creek Road, so it asks for unanimous consent to consider this.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll ask for passing.
It has been granted.
Second. Any discussion?
This is a signal light in conjunction with the extension of Black Creek Parkway, and I understand it to possibly be open by the end of this month, so we're looking forward to that addition down there where the bridge is, and it's going to really open up that area there to get to the high school from Rainbow City area down through there.
Is there any plans to extend that down to 77? Are they in the works, or do anybody know?
Yeah, they're going to four lane the... all the way down to 77.
Okay.
So you'll have a four lane there from the high school all the way down.
It takes it long to do that, Robert, and to get the first half of it. You won't have to worry about it.
Well, I know. I mean, we were young men when they started that far. Now we old. Okay.
That may come up on the topic Thursday, I believe, where they have Metropolitan GMPO meeting Thursday morning.
Okay. Any other... Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution I would like to introduce today for unanimous consent to consider. It's a document number 2011-254. It's an authorizing agreement with Alabama Oil and Gas Recovery for the closing of two fuel tanks at the fire station number two at the airport.
And second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Any discussion?
No, sir.
I guess that's self-explanatory.
Well, it's self-explanatory, except that this is for... there used to be a reserve unit or a National Guard unit out at the airport.
Yeah.
And it's not there anymore, and the feds gave it to us, so therefore we put a fire station out there, and this is some fuel tanks that have to be closed according to the state regulations and the federal regulations.
They are above ground tanks, they're not below ground.
I don't see the fire chief.
I was just going to say, I don't see the fire chief here, but I don't think I've asked the question, how did it... or did it help us any when we put that fire station out there? I know with the plant, the new plant that's out there and all the other development going on, did it help our fire rating any? I don't... I don't know.
It gave us a quicker response, Robert, to all the places on Highway 77 there, the motels and restaurants and stuff. The other truck, the closest truck coming from there was Walnut Park, and it had to come pretty good ways to get there.
Right.
So it should have helped our fire rating out there.
I'm just hoping it did.
It'll be determined when ISO comes in, unannounced.
Okay.
And then we'll find out.
Then we'll find out.
We're in pretty good shape, that's going to help a lot.
Because I know that that area is expanding business-wise, and that's a good... it was a good move to put it out there. I just wonder how it helped us.
Okay, we vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We normally have a lot more business to do, but we were gone last week, so we did a lot of it that we would have done this week. So I'm sorry that we have such a nice-looking group, people who are trying to learn, and Ms. Lowes has done a great job over the years. We've given some summer enrichment, and if there's any questions that any of you would like to ask concerning the city government, we would be happy to entertain them. None?
Everybody don't ask the same question at one time. I know some of these young folks got a question. No? Surely you do.
We can give them a civic lesson on city government if y'all want to.
That'll work. How many of you know who the mayor is? Yeah, I heard earlier, a lot of you didn't know who he was, but you know now, and of course, he's not here today. He's... I guess he's still on vacation?
I don't know.
I don't know. I think he's still on vacation. Is that right, Shane?
Yeah.
He's still on vacation.
How many of you know who your city council representative is?
That's going to be the next question.
I'm glad you asked that. I have a question this morning. They didn't even go to district. They're not home for you tonight. They may not be able to go. They have parents around them, ladies and gentlemen. They have to go to somebody I would give you, they are here, who's at city council. Everybody's going to go there tomorrow.
Right. Okay. You will be...
If you're not going to work at council, they didn't know where they are.
That's right.
You will be voters one day, and so, you know, that's one of those things that we're going to hold you accountable for, and that is voting, registering to vote and voting. You just... I hope you realize, and some of you might not realize, how critical and how important a thing that your right to vote is, and I hope that as you continue to grow and to learn and to stay in school, you know, and do those things that you know that are right, that you... don't forget that, and let that be something that you, on your 18th birthday, you go to the registrar's office and vote and register to vote. Thank you.
Okay.
Our council is really the legislative part of your city government. We make the laws you live by, we control the purse strings, we do abatements, we do all contracts, approve all contracts. That's what we do. The day-to-day operation of the city is the mayor's responsibility. He's over the employees of the city, with the exception of the Fire and Police Department. They're hired by a civil service board that hires fires and disciplines police and fire department. It's something that we've been trying to tweak a little bit over the years and haven't been able to do it. We're one of about two cities that have this civil service board that is appointed by the governor, that has much control over Fire and Police Department, so anyway, that's my history lesson.
Thank you.
I think it's interesting to know that there's 500 or more employees in the city. Don't think about it, that's a lot of people, and some 70% of them of the taxes collected go to the payroll. Yes. Stand up. I'd like to talk a little about...
She said, "What did you have to do to be on the city council?" That's her question, Bob.
You have to live in the district for at least six months, be a resident of that district for six months.
A registered voter.
A registered voter.
And pay your $50 qualifying fee.
Pay your... yeah, right.
That's it? That's it. You've got to be 18.
You have to be...
Well, you have to be a registered voter, so you can be 18.
You have to be a registered voter.
Yes, sir. City engineer, we've been asking that same question too, maybe. Maybe he could tell you.
That's a good question.
Good question. Go, Chad.
How much time you got? Besides just dealing with just questions from the public and anything basically within your right-of-way, all the infrastructure, as opposed to just the water in the sewer is done by the Water Works and Sewer Board, but anything, any kind of drainage issues, any road issues, resurfacing, extending roads, widening roads, I'm giving you just a general overview. There actually is a lot more to that, but even on the administrative side of finding grant money, working with the council and the mayor as far as... and congressmen as far as getting money to the city, because not everything's funded by the city. There's a lot of things that we do we wouldn't be able to do without state and federal government help. So, but from a just look standpoint, it would be whatever's in the right-of-way, whether that's streetlights or paving or what have you. Sure?
But you're going to help with this, not your own.
Black Creek Parkway?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're... our role in the Black Creek Parkway is actually, like Mr. Harris said, is a metropolitan planning organization project, which is an NPO project. So that means that we got state and federal money involved, and there's city money, and it's also with Rainbow City. But yes, we are involved from a standpoint of administration and oversight. Now, the part that he was talking about right now, again, how much time have you got? But it's... they're in a right-of-way acquisition phase, which basically means that to widen what they need to widen, they've got to go through with all the store owners and purchase that property, and then they go into a plan phase and things like that. But yeah, we're... each project's a little bit different for what our involvement is. It may be that our Public Works is actually doing the project, and we draw up plans and kind of show them how to do it and oversight it, and then a lot of things, though, we bid out in-house to a contractor, and then we have people that go out and make sure that it's done properly. No problem?
There's a question right there. Yes, that's right.
Is it easy for the city to...
I couldn't hear.
Is it easy for the city to...
Absolutely. Couldn't hear you.
Absolutely not.
So you see?
Well, you know, there's eight of us, even though there's only six of us up here today, there's two missing, the mayor and then another council member is absent, and you're going to have eight different opinions sometime on certain issues. The key thing is everybody coming together as one to do what's best for the city, and as a general rule, I would think that 97, 98% of the things that we vote on, you get a 7.0 vote, but sometimes you have difference of opinion and you have a different vote, but basically, we come together on those major issues and work together. But a former council member used to say, and I always quote him, Councilman Cunningham used to say, "You've got eight people up here, if we all agreed on everything, then you're paying seven folks for nothing." So you're going to have those difference of opinion, but basically, we all work towards what's best for the city.
The mayor sits on our council, but he doesn't have a vote. He doesn't have a vote on the council, so...
Back in the back there.
What's the duty of the city attorney?
City attorney.
That's another one we've been asking.
Generally, I'm the lawyer for the mayor and the council, the different department heads. They have questions about what they can do or how they can legally do the things they'd like to do. We draw the ordinances and resolutions, the contracts, the leases, the deeds, various conveyances and legal documents that the council uses to conduct its business. Now, normally, we'd have a lot of paperwork here, and usually that's what we prepare and review, so there's a lot more of it than we did today. Anybody that has a claim against the city, maybe your car ran over a pothole and burst a tire, or one of our weed eaters threw a rock and burst your windshield, or you had a collision with a police car, those are things that we handle. Sometimes the city gets sued for things it did or didn't do, and we have to work with the claims people and the attorneys that represent the city in defending those cases. I'm sometimes the answer man when somebody's stuck as to what they can or can't do, or how to start something, how to interpret new laws that the legislature passes every year. Right now, I'm looking at the immigration law to see how it impacts things the city will have to do in the future.
That's something I thought we might ought to mention, excuse me, before we finish. We're... the mayor is responsible for the day-to-day operation of the city. We don't have the authority to tell a city employee to go do something. That's not our job. We're a legislative branch, so if you call and want that ditch cleaned out, you call your councilman. Usually, they'll go overboard and try to help you any way they can and make sure that proper people know about it, but as far as having authority to go tell somebody, "Go do this," we don't have that authority.
How can you become the city attorney?
Well, after you go through college and graduate, you get to go to law school for three years, then you get to take a bar exam that lasts three days, and then hopefully you get hired the city attorney. You have opening. I've been here for a long time, so there hasn't been an opening in a good while, but it's a long process.
I just wondered, does anybody else have any questions?
We're happy to have y'all with us today and hope you learned a little bit. Like I say, Ms. Lowes has done a good job for a good many years now, and we got somebody that's decided they want to ask some questions.
Police chief.
I don't really... I'm not the police chief. I'll try to answer your question. I'm not the police chief.
Turn your mic on, please.
I'm not the police chief. The chief is Richard Crouch, but I'll try to... I'll try to answer your question the best, the way I say it. I think it's a political appointment. Normally, they would have to have an undergraduate degree with some type of specialized training, preferably the command staff development program at the FBI Academy or Southern Police Institute, which is in Louisville, Kentucky, or Northwestern University. It's a 10 to 16-week program. A lot of departments want someone to have a master's degree or a law degree, but I mean, you're going to have to convince somebody that you're the person, because you're going to probably have 60 people that'll apply. So they're going to look at your academic credentials first. I would think most police chiefs have been doing law enforcement a long time, 15 or 20 years before they'd ever be considered, and they would already have been a chief somewhere or hold a senior administrative position at a department. A lot of times, they don't hire police chiefs from within a department. A lot of times, if you're looking for a police chief, a lot of times, they'll just go somewhere else, because everybody starts fighting up to get it. Everybody wants to move up, so a lot of times, for us, it's the civil service board. A lot of times, they'll just go somewhere else. Last time, it was Mississippi. Before that, it was Birmingham, so they'll go somewhere else and pick somebody and bring somebody in totally new. Does that answer your question?
They're hired strictly by the civil service board. We don't have any say in who they hire for a police chief.
Bob, can I say something before you do that? I've been watching the crew here. We were talking about earlier about the vote and so on and so forth. We serve at the will of the people, and the people are y'all, and that's the power of the vote, because everybody who votes out there has that much power toward electing people up here, and that's when you bring your ideas to focus on this forum up here. But I'm going to tell you, I heard one back there said, "What do you have to do to be a councilperson? You can't just come up here and say, 'I want to be a councilperson and dive in up here overnight, not knowing anything.'" I would encourage each and every one of you, once you get registered and have that ability to vote, to study, to come up here, to learn what's going on in your community, be active, and at least be... add something to the flavor of this council. And I think there are a lot of faces out there that would do that, but first of all, you've got to vote, and then remember to serve us to the people. That's my word up here.
Mr. President, let me add something to what Councilman Reed said. Also, we go to classes. You have to go to classes. We go... I just got back last week graduating from my advanced degree. The first degree's a 40-hour degree. It's a basic degree. It took me about four years to get that one, three and a half years probably, and I went back, and I've just got my advanced degree, and I think I've got a few extra hours on my continuing degree. But, you know, it's just not... we just don't set up here all the time. We go to school, we go to classes, we learn about government. We have ethics training last week. I love every one of us sitting here, and Derek, Councilman Williams, who also was with us, went to Huntsville last week, and we stayed three or four days up there, and we all went to school, so it's just not a come up here. Everybody up here knows what's going on, and, you know, we always try to help each other.
You have a lot of times when people are out campaigning, they have a tendency to tell what they're going to do for you and not know whether they can do it or not. The problem is, like Ms. Stewart said, we can't give an order, so like you're talking about to clean out that ditch, if we told you, "If you just elect me, I'll clean out all your ditches," well, you wouldn't clean out any of them unless...
You're going to do it personally.
Unless you did it personally, you could go out there and do that, but I don't think anybody's going to do that. So what Mr. Reed's saying is you need to really know and what you're getting into, and also what you can do and what you can't do, and I know that's going to be hard for people to learn, but when they get up here, a lot of times, they're disappointed in that they can't do what they said they told the people they could do. Okay. Okay, we appreciate having y'all come today.
Counselor. Are we going to do remarks outside of this?
Yeah.
I just wanted... okay, we're going to do remarks.
That's what I was fixing to do. Department reports, committees, or any remarks by the mayor and the council, Ben, you want to start?
Yes, I wanted to thank the Gadsden, Edrawa Patriots Association, number one, for the fireworks last night, which I think we all enjoyed, but I think even more than that, I want to thank them for the flags. How many of you have seen the flags up and down Megan Boulevard and all? Okay? I want to let you all know that we have replaced 50 of those this year, got a little freight. We're going to do 50 more and then have a rotating system where we'll have those flags every year in good condition, and then add to them every year. And in that line, I want... in that line of thought, I want to thank Public Works and their crews, because they put them out, they take them up, they store them, they get them cleaned, and every year we can count them. It's on a rotating system, and I do want to thank them for that.
I don't have anything.
I just want to say, it's great to not hold the fan here, it's great to have this young group out today, and we want to thank Ms. Lowes for her continued years of working with the summer program. That's all I have.
Yeah, I too want to congratulate Ms. Lowes and her program. A lot of the young people who have come through that program have turned out to be very, very productive students and citizens, so we really want to thank her for her hard work, and I just want to encourage all of our young folks to stay in school, number one, and number two, do the best that you can do and do the best that you can be. There's a lot of opportunities for you now, a heck of a lot more opportunities now than it was when I was coming along. You know, I was talking to a couple of young people the other day who said, you know, "I couldn't afford to go to college, so I went over to the community college and I got an associate degree." I said, "Well, guess what? Now you can go to Alabama State, Alabama A&amp;M, totally free if you have an associate degree." You young folks now have an opportunity, when you get into high school, you can have dual enrollment, the high school and the community college, and you can walk out of high school with a high school diploma and an associate degree out of high school. We didn't have those type of opportunities, so I encourage you to look into those types of opportunities and be the best that you can be, and I think you're going to make all of us proud, your parents, your family, and this city, when you do those type things. And again, thank you, Ms. Lowes, for your work.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to thank Ms. Lowes for her work and her endeavors and her efforts in the summer enrichment program, which has been very successful and which has had 100% support from this city council. I also like to also congratulate and thank those people who volunteered to work with Ms. Lowes' program. She has a wonderful staff of volunteers. None of those people are paid. They take their time in the summer to work with the kids, and that's a wonderful thing when you have that. I want the kids to understand also that you have one of your... one of your volunteers that come out and work with you on a regular basis, and he's emphasizing reading, he's emphasizing... emphasizing reading to an extent that I have never heard anyone emphasize. So I just continue, I'll help him to encourage you to understand that reading is fundamental, that unless you can read and comprehend what you read, you won't accomplish anything. Take advantage of the library systems that we have. If you don't have computers, the libraries have all kinds of wonderful programs for you to participate in, as well as the program that Ms. Lowes has for you, and I hope you enjoy your summer, and I hope you had a wonderful Memorial, Labor Day yesterday, 4th of July. We'll get it right. All of those are good holidays for us, they have some national significance to us, but I hope you enjoyed your Labor Day yesterday, and I hope you continue to enjoy your summer, but be serious, and go back to school this fall, you know, having learned something more than you left this past spring. Thank you for coming, and we enjoyed having you here, and good luck.
If there's not anything else, I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
So moved.
This meeting's adjourned.